Okay, Brian?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Lynn?
Here.
Marcus, then?
Here.
Here.
People are here or free?
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and delvered to the end of its fall.
Under approval of the agenda, we have a request to move line item R on the floor up to E. Where that's the police chief, Todd Ferris, would like to speak in relation to the ballgame. Motion approved, the agenda is amended.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to attempt the agenda as amended in a discussion during none all in favor of the motion signified by raising a hand, please, thank you. Consent agenda, this is different items of business and we handle all those in one motion. Motion approved, the consent.
Second.
We've consented to approve the consent agenda in discussion. During none all in favor of the motion signified by raising a hand. Thank you, please. Thank you, thank you. Public hearing, we do have a public hearing this evening. It is in relation to the proposal to file a CDBG grant, economic development set aside application. Motion open, the public team?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing in discussion. There are none all in favor of the motion signified by raising a hand. The public hearing is open. Public hearing is just what it says, it's for the public. You all are invited to speak to this consideration that we will be considering later in the meeting. Are there any statements from the public, questions, comments? Oh, excuse me, just a second, did we get anything written?
So there was no comments that were sent into the city. At the last council meeting, it was brought to you guys to assist in sponsorship of an application for the economic development set aside for a new business that's relocating to Centerville. As part of that, we have to hold a public hearing to identify the needs and the concerns that would accompany that application on behalf of the city. So you agreed to assist in the sponsorship for the new company Sharkfin Shears that will be relocating to Centerville and the public hearing will determine whether that application should be submitted or not. So we are applying for $75,000 on behalf of the community, or behalf of the business and that will be through a forgivable loan that will be sponsored by the city and monitored by the city for the completion of it through the duration of its time, its term. So, any other questions on that?
Does everybody get a chance to hear Nicole? It's in relation to a new business we have coming to Centerville. Sharkfin Shears is the name of the company. And we are going to provide the $75,000 set aside grant.
There's also some additional funding that's going to be brought in. AEDC has granted some property to the company. AIC has done some monetary donations, plus there's other grants that will be determined in the figuration of the final budget. So they are anticipating creation of 15 jobs over the next three years that will benefit low to moderate income individuals in the Appinest County area.
Great, cooperative effort and that's what we left and if they can't tell, those 15 jobs might turn into 150.
And I think we're looking at first part of July roughly as getting the business and everything started as far as
As far as having the building completed.
Ready to go, is that right?
Yeah. He'd like to be starting to build it in April. And as soon as it's done, he wants to be operating here, probably in July.
That's great. Any other comments, questions, et cetera? I will entertain a motion to close, the motion moved. That's seconded. They've moved and seconded to close the public hearing in discussion. There are none all in favor of the motion signified by raising a hand. Thank you. Okay. Approval of the bills. You all had a chance to carefully review the bills. Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bill as amended. Any discussion, any questions? There are none all in favor of the motion signified by raising a hand. Thank you. Financial statement. We gained a little debt this month, this year. Any comments or questions? Motion approved, the motion seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the financial report. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion signified by raising your hand, please. Thank you. Departmental reports, Public Works, Public Works, Public Works.
Water department, completed their daily work orders, locates and testing, distributed 18,068,000 gallons of water. Completed their monthly operating report, completed water meter reading, rereads and shut offs, replaced eight meters, had six water leaks and installed 220 radio reads. The water pollution control department completed daily operations, testing, locates and maintenance schedules, treated 19,205,000 gallons of wastewater. Completed monthly operating reports, completed the 503 land application report and it was sent off to EPA. Serviced and inspected pumps at the east and west wastewater plants, responded to two customer complaints. The street department had one snow event, plowed, had a little snow to haul off the square, fixed a stoplight at Haynes and Maple, they'd been hauling rock from the rock quarry and putting some rock in the alleys where the trouble spots are at. They cleaned the storm sewer intakes, been running the street sweeper when it's possible and been doing some shop work, everything will be ready for the event that's planned later this week. Snowy day.
Airports. Todd Ferris, I'm sorry, anybody have any questions or comments? Thanks Steve, good report. Airport, Mark?
Fuel sales are slow but it's believed normal for this time of year. Had a total of 800 gallons sold. Fuel on hand, 3,935 gallons of low lead and 1,500 gallons of jet fuel. I've gained one new aircraft at the airport, so we're
How many, I'm sorry?
I've gained a new airplane at the airport, so we're all full.
How many now?
A total of 14.
Good.
And last month, the airport had approximately 250 flight operations, mostly private.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Mark? Library?
I am Patty Timmons and I'm here on behalf of the library board tonight and I have two different pieces of information for each of you. One is just some library statistics and another one is asking for your support, your continued support through the legislature for some extra funding that, it's not extra funding, they're trying to reinstitute some funding that we had, some funding levels. And I just want to say thank you for your continued support of the library and making us feel like we're a part of the city.
You're certainly welcome. Library is one of the most important assets of this community. There are a lot of people involved and it's friends of the library seem to be joining in.
They do a wonderful job, they're very active.
Yeah, you do. So, thank you very much for your trip.
Thank you. And there are some, there are some things in that letter that I don't know if you're aware of at the library. Anyone who has a library card can get online and use some of our databases through the state and they really are wonderful information.
And you have electronic books now, Kindle?
Yes.
All that?
Yes, Jamie's been very good about keeping us up with all that.
Thank you very much, Patty.
Thank you.
Any comments? Police Chief Tom Demery, presentation of department awards.
Thanks, sir. I've got two awards that we'd like to give out this evening and as you know, from time to time, we do give out some awards to employees for extra effort and different things like that and I'd ask Shannon Wells to come forward if she would. This brief, just briefly kind of what this award is about. Dispatcher Shannon Wells is being given the department commendation award. This award is given to an employee for outstanding actions that were above and beyond duty requirements, which has brought substantial credit upon themselves and furthers the department's goals as a professional agency. Dispatcher Wells was the on duty on January 8th at approximately 3:15 a.m. when she received a 911 call of a fire at Golden Age Care Center. During this call, dispatcher Wells handled herself in the most professional way possible. Dispatcher Wells fielded numerous 911 calls as well as calls from the public and those responding emergency personnel. As the only dispatcher on duty, she handled the radio communication for 12 law enforcement officers from three different agencies, four ambulances from two different agencies, six fire apparatus from two different agencies and countless telephone calls. Dispatcher Wells also took it upon herself to begin contacting various locations and surrounding communities in order to determine if they could hold residents in the event of a full evacuation. Dispatcher Wells is most deserving of this award and her dedication, training and hard work have prepared her for this emergency situation. I do have one more, Officer Garrett Buckle, if he would come forward. Officer Buckle is being given the department meritorious service award. This award is the department's second highest valor award and is given to an employee that performs an intentional act of coming to the aid of a citizen while putting their own personal safety at risk. On February 6th at approximately 4:25 p.m., Officer Buckle was on his way home after completing his shift for the day. Officer Buckle witnessed a vehicle leave the roadway and enter a ditch. This vehicle continued driving forward and launched approximately 40 feet after hitting a driveway embankment. Officer Buckle ran to the vehicle, which was by this point on his side and on fire. The driver of the vehicle was originally unconscious and not responding to the request to exit the car. Officer Buckle broke the window out of the car and was able to remove the driver and take her to a safe distance from the vehicle. Officer Buckle then called 911 and requested assistance. Because of his quick response and intentional act which put his own personal safety at risk to help the driver of the vehicle, Officer Buckle has earned the meritorious service award.
Congratulations to both of you. Thank you, Chief. We, I assume you are suggesting that we dispose of old police cars?
Right.
Wouldn't have one, you could link up City Hall for the mayor.
Well, they're not safe to drive, but you could sure have them. What does it, I guess the last time we, it would have been the spring, I'm sorry, in the fall, when the city had some equipment we wanted to get rid of. We'd learned that we needed to get council approval ahead of time and I think we had to have a quick special meeting. So we do have these cars that we're going to be getting rid, I have five old police cars that we, that are well beyond their use. We're going to be getting rid of those hopefully sometime the first part of April and I just wanted to go ahead and get that out of the way so that we didn't have to have a special council meeting, just have your approval that we can sell those and get them gone and get them out of our parking lot down there.
Are you going to scrap or sell?
No, I'll sell them, yeah. We sell them, we have an auction coming up the first Saturday in April and that seems to be a good time to put them in and I can just put them in there and we'll get rid of them and they're kind of, there's maybe one that's probably roadworthy still, the rest of them, people will buy them either for parts or scrap or whatever. That seems to be the best way to get rid of them. We expect anywhere from 400 to 500 people to be at that auction, so there'll be a nice crowd, it'll be the best crowd to get them in front of, so. I just, you know, and again, if there's any other city equipment that wants to get rid of, to me, that's a good time to get this, get approval to do it and then we don't have to bring a special meeting back together. That's what that's been.
Motion to approve. Second. Been moved and seconded to approve disposal of the old police cars. Any discussion? There are none all in favor of the motion signified by raising your hands, please. Thank you. And because we moved, thank you, Tom. I know you have to leave, you know, so. R, let's move, Todd Ferris, which is AEDC.
Thank you for actually buffing me up, I didn't realize that was possible, so thank you. For nearly two years, I have at Appinest Economic Development Corporation have been trying to come up with a good way to update our website, to create a more, more effective economic development drawing website. And so I've been following the expertise of a company called Golden Shovel, which is based up in Minnesota and they exclusively work with economic development, economic development, in the economic development arena, I should say. They work with economic development offices, but also with cities, counties and chambers. But the reason why I'm thinking that it'd be good for us to move in a direction of a company that specifically works in this area is this company in particular constantly interviews and meets with site selectors. Now, site selectors are hired by large companies to go and find a site. So they do that by researching websites. They look at the economic development website, but they also look at the local city and the county websites, okay? And the advantage of working with Golden Shovel is they know what these men and women are looking for on a website and what they don't want to see on a website, which is important. And so I had a gentleman from Golden Shovel come down and do a presentation last fall and Rob was there and so was Jim, Jim our mayor and Rob Lind and a number of other folks from the community. And actually, and I will give credit where credit due, Jim actually came up with this idea of, they have a certain price that they charge to do or update a website or create a new website, which is $15,000. And so that's normally what they would charge. Jim came up with the idea and he said, "Well, what if, what if you updated or redid the city website and the county website and the AEDC website, but all for the $15,000?" And John, the presenter, said, "You know, we could work that out." But here's the thing, we need to come up with the money. And so what, and I'll tell you a little bit more about their services, but I've just cut into the chase here. They, what I'm coming to the city for and I'm also going to be going to the county tomorrow morning, since their meeting is tomorrow, not today, to request $3,000 to redo your website and then I'm asking for an additional $125 a month. And I'll get to that here in a second. I'm going to ask for the same thing from the county and then I'm asking from us, $3,000 from AEDC and $250 a month. And again, I'll explain the monthly in a second. Then I'm also going to the tourism committee, Alliance Energy and the ACCF board, which is the gambling money as they say, and also AIC if needed, the Appinest Industrial Corporation, to pool the dollars together. Now, what, what Golden Shovel does outside of, or in addition to creating the website is they have professional staff or professional content writers that also will meet with us to find out what our goals are and they will set up the appropriate Facebook, Twitter accounts, YouTube, whatever, LinkedIn, whatever would fit our goals and then they would actually post, and I apologize, I don't know, I don't know all the right jargon here, but they would post to the Facebook accounts or they would tweet or whatever to get information out on a regular basis for us to follow our goals. They would actually meet with, for an hour with me every single month to make sure that we're reaching the goals that we had set with them. Anything that we wanted to as a community add to those posts or anything like that, they will teach us how to do that or if we would rather just send them a quick email and say, "Hey, would you get this on?" Any updates or anything to any of the websites, they would update within 24 hours. Anything, if we want to change the whole first page of the website, they'll change it within 24 hours. So their fees again are $15,000 for the website?
Is that a one per?
Yes. And then $500 a month for the maintenance and upkeep and upgrades and everything of all three websites. And one thing to put in perspective, because I work very closely with our region, this is actually a coincidence, this is not the reason why I'm coming to you guys, just because of Tumwa used these guys, I found out later that they've used these guys. One of the things I thought was interesting was, and I just lost my train of thought, sorry, just lost my train of thought. Oh, I know the economic development director very well in Tumwa and he had checked into another company that I'm very familiar with, I know the owner of the company that also works in economic development and Janet Adi is her name, and checked with Janet on what her company would charge and it would have cost Tumwa $65,000 to do the same exact thing that Golden Shovel does. So initially, when I saw the $15,000, honestly, I was very alarmed, but then the more I've gotten to know what they do, I've talked to more and more economic developers and people that work in that realm, I've understood the respect that this company has within this realm and the fact that it does actually make a difference. They would actually create all the three websites to work very closely in concert with each other and to me, that's very important. Where the navigation, when you went from one to another would vary very similar, if that makes sense. So anyway, I believe I covered all of my points here for the most part. If you have some questions, I mean, I tried to fly through that as quickly as I could.
Todd? The $500 a month?
Yes.
You said that they would teach us or you or whatever how to program, put that in, whatever, however they'd haul that.
Yes.
But if, if the city should choose to have them do it, are they going to charge extra?
No. The $500 covers it all.
Okay.
So if it was as simple as, if Joyce, if the council wanted Joyce to have the minutes on the website, all she would have to do is as soon as she has the minutes together, she would send a quick email with the attachment to them and they would, they would have it on the website as, you know, within 24 hours of receiving that email. Same way with the county, same way with anything that we wanted to put on, they would go ahead and just do that. And they would also say, "By the way, do you want to know how to do it yourself?" And if we do, then we can, Joyce could do it herself if she wanted to, but, but that's a great question. Yeah, anything, any changes or updates with any of the three websites would be covered with that $500.
But when are we looking for them to clarify?
Right. My, my thought was, probably the most changes and most stuff that we try to do with the website probably would come out of my office, so that's why I thought we should bear the larger amount. So that's why I thought if we cover 250 a month, that increases our budget by $3,000 a year, we could find a way to do that. And then if I could ask for $125 a month from the county and also from the city, you know, that would, that would cover the other $3,000 a year, basically.
Do we have unlimited changes with them between all three entities?
Yes. Yeah, and that was, that's, thank you for asking that, because that's, knowing that there'd be three different entities, it surprised me yet. And, and there's a number of things, some really unique things that we talked about in that meeting, that they're going to be able to improve for us. And one is, just in case you're, you find it interesting, as you might Google Centerville and then along the top of the page, if you click on images, if anybody's researching our community and just wants to know whether there's some images of Centerville, you ought to do that and see what images come up and see if you're totally exceeding the crowd of all the images that happen to show up. We were kind of surprised by what came up, which was, and Golden Shovel didn't bring this up to us. Actually, a new resident of our community brought this up because he was moving here from out of state. And he said, "This is what I saw of Centerville, but I still decided to come." I'm just leaving it at that. Golden Shovel said that they could improve that very quickly through a specific campaign within using Facebook, using Twitter and so on and so forth to change those images to be very positive pictures on, just, just one you Google Centerville, for example, or Appinest County, for that matter.
I understand we have some local people who do a, I think off the top of my head it is Eddie. Have you thought about maybe putting it out in the bid or is it because these people specify that they absolutely work only in economic development that you're so among them?
That's, thank you for bringing that up. I have, actually Lisa, Eddie has done an awesome job for us, she designed her website for us and has done a great job. She's also, she and I kind of did that together. I didn't know the first thing about creating a website and she was very quick to say she didn't know much about economic development, but put on everything that I suggested that we put on. And, and then, but there are some things that, that she does have some limits. I did also meet with Doug and we had a nice long talk, in fact, we've met twice. And, and I think Doug actually could do some really good things for us, but I'm not sure if I'm ready to go that route right at this moment. I think that, in my opinion, what we need to do is really move in the completely professional economic development direction, get it all created, get it set up and maybe even within a couple of years, we start realizing, you know, now that we have the website up and going, now that we have everything working in concert, now we have a little bit of a clue on how to post and how to make all this thing, these things work, now maybe we can switch and go away from their monthly fee and go to something more local. That's, because they don't have a certain, hey, you gotta sign up for two years like a cellphone or whatever. It's, you sign up with them and you go as long as you want to go with them and if that's for 10 years or a year and a half, they'd rather have you than obviously, but we're not locked into a certain period of time.
Have any other local organizations showing any interest in maybe becoming a part of your package?
I haven't.
Conservation, maybe the chamber?
The chamber through tourism is where, I'm looking to apply there with, through the tourism part. That's where, because they went through tourism for their website as well, so there is a little bit of continuity there. And part of, and I'll be honest, the Golden Shovel group does have a background of in some smaller communities having specific campaigns through Facebook and so on to contact past graduates, so people that have moved from communities, to try to help appeal to them to come back through getting good news, getting positive information about growth in the community, so on and so forth. And they've seen some success with that in some other communities and that is a big goal of mine, honestly, is to get more and more of our past graduates back to the community and help our population grow, obviously. Help us not be the smallest 3A school anymore, hopefully we can move up from that. Thought I'd throw that in as a side note. And, and so that also appeals to me that, you know, again, if we can get that laid out and set up, I think that that could be really something that we could continue if, either with Golden Shovel long term or possibly, like I said, after a couple of years. Hopefully switch and, you know, go with somebody local. Like I said, I've had some great meetings with Doug and I think he's very capable of a lot of things and I think there's great things he can also do for businesses, so, you know, even if it's not with us right now, I'm excited to have him work with local businesses as well.
Any other questions? Any other questions? I guess I'm a firm believer in advertising, Todd, and we don't seem to really have much for Centerville, so I think this would be a good way to, to get some type of image out. We don't really have any campaigns right now, do we, but?
I think not outside of what the Chamber does, or tourism does with the brochures, which I know that they get a lot of those out, and also with the, you know, being at the state fair, but outside of that, I, I agree. You know, and maybe also having the new Chamber website may also help, you know, it might have some extra draw there, too. But, but yes, that is exactly what I'm thinking as well, is going with some folks that know, and I'll be, I'm not a website expert. I was just asked to create a new website within about two months after I was hired, something I've never done before. And that's what we have, and I think it's served us well, but I think it could serve us better by going with somebody that really knows economic development from a website standpoint.
Thanks, Todd. Thanks for bringing that to us. Thank you. Good luck tonight.
Thank you.
Review and approve the HUD applicant slash recipient disclosure form. Cole, sir?
Do you want to take action?
Did you want to take?
As we can.
If it's on the agenda, you can take action, it doesn't have to say approved, considered,
whatever, if it's on the agi, if that item is on the agenda, you can take action.
See what Dean in the county says. He's like, tell him we don't hate him. Take my word.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Want to bring this up for the later meeting?
I think it'd be a nice, a good thing to know where our budget's at.
And I'd like to see what the other guys in the board is saying. Okay. Back to review and approve the HUD applicant recipient disclosure form. Cole?
In your packet, you have a copy of the applicant disclosure report, this is just the final signature for the mayor to sign as part of the application for the Edsa project, so. It states that city information, it's the Economic Development Set Aside Program, we're applying for seventy-five thousand dollars, and we're not expecting over two hundred thousand during fiscal year, so. Any questions on that?
Motion approved. Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve the HUD applicant recipient disclosure form. Any discussion? For now, in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand, please. Thank you. And review and approve federal assurances, signature page.
Yes. And you have a copy of that, as well as the federal assurance signature page, this is basically authorizing the county, or the mayor to sign it and submit the application once you approve it, so.
Motion approved. Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve the federal assurances signature page, and having the mayor sign it, is that correct?
Yes.
Any discussion? For now, in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Review, update community development and housing needs assessment.
As you were putting your, together your housing application, we updated your community development housing needs assessment. We overlooked one little area that was very important, and that is your community development, economic development. We focused on housing, but we didn't do the other. So, under the other community development, I have updated it saying economic development and new job creation opportunities to the community, that allows for this specific application to be as included as that development into the city, so. And the above is opportunities, employment opportunities through job creation for your low to moderate income persons in the community as well, so. Those were two things I added to the already approved, but we not need to approve with those changes.
Motion to approve the changes? Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve the changes in the community development housing needs assessment. Any discussion? For now, in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand. Thank you. And review and approve the EDSA, that's Economic Development, application information, and this is in relation to Sharp Thin.
In the, all right, in your packet, you have the application, the information is being sent up, it's the same format, it goes through in details, what this, what the company is applying for, the development, the job creation, their financial and business plan, and the assurance page, all the information that you've approved will be attached as well. Some of this I've already started sending up to the state, because they want to get it on their docket, for starting to review at their first of March meeting, so they kind of are on a quicker schedule, I guess. They understand that you had to approve everything, so it's not obligating to send that stuff up, but this is what we are sending up, and once I have uploaded everything, you'll have a final copy of the application with its attachments as well, so.
Great. Thank you.
We just need to approve that.
Motion approved. Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the EDSA application information for Sharp Thin, any discussion? For now, in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Okay, finally, the resolution, 2013-3172, to approve submittal of IDOT All-Town Sign Replacement Program application. We talked about this last meeting.
Yep. I've been working with Steve, the program through the DOT has a sign replacement that we can look at, replacing some of your stop signs that are worn out, damaged, need to be replaced at no expense to the city. We can apply for up to five thousand dollars worth of materials, which I believe we identified ninety-nine signs this first go-around. Steve and some of the staff have gone out and identified their concerns, what the damage is that we have to report to, and this is the final resolution that has to go up at the application, saying the city is willing to, to participate in the program. So, once we do this, I'll finalize the application, and it'll go up to DOT, and they'll review, and we'll go from there, so.
Motion approved, resolution. Seconded. Moved and seconded to approve submittal of the DOT All-Town Sign Replacement Program. Any further discussion or questions? For now, in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand. Roll call on that?
That's what I told you the other day.
On resolutions, I mean?
Roll call.
Okay. Sorry, we'll take a roll call of, on, on resolution number 2013-3172. Roll call, please.
Brandon?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Morrison?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
And unanimous approval, thank you. Apneus County Sustainable Economies, Citywide Trash Program Proposal, again, you, you got someone to?
I do.
Hi, Mark.
Hello.
Mark Reinecke here from the Iowa State, yeah, Extension Office, so, back last fall, Apneus County was approached by Mark's committee to work with them on developing the Apneus Economies and updates some information. We had a kickoff meeting, I think it was in August, and, and we've met some smaller community, smaller committees, and within the last couple of months, we've gone down to four committees that were working individually on projects here in Centerville and Apneus County. One of those projects is environmental development, environmental issues, and with that, the small committee that's met, we have about twelve people that are through the community, working on needs and concerns that we have here in Centerville and Apneus County, and how we can address them. And at our meeting last October, it was brought up the potential of what it would take, or the responsibilities and the possibilities of citywide trash pickup. Is it a possibility, what's the pros, what's the cons, and what we've got out there? So, through Mark's direction, we've kind of put together some, some prospect, you know, looking at how we can do that, what we can do for projects, and how it affects current business service providers right now in our community, so. In your packet, I believe we had a, we have some general information that, that we put through.
This is an outreach, and, and this is something, as ISU, we put this together and did a backward mapping project, and within each of the individual four groups that came up out of the major meeting that we had, that some of you were, and many of the people behind me here, were involved with that initial meeting and other meetings. This one with the environmental group, you know, there's several parts behind it, you know, they were looking at wellness, environmental education, bringing that all in together, and what could we do for the better good that would also benefit Apneus County. And as we've gone out with this, we've had another, a mayor or so that have come in that have looked at, okay, what's going on, how can we also put this date out in the county if Centerville happens to do something? So the proposal that was brought together is to look at citywide trash pickup, how that would be used within the city of Centerville, and then to ask you to take that under consideration. We do have a working group, possibly to appoint people to that, people from the city council or from wherever it is that you would designate to work with that group to go forward, to identify those new members, so that we could go forward and then start working with the haulers that are out there, and get their feedback. You know, we don't have a prescribed program, and we want to see something developed through the community, in working with haulers, in working with the citizens. So that's where this will be done, and then we'll have to get together some kind of a protocol for a decision-making process that's looked at going forward. Is that pretty much? And I also want to, while we're talking about this, there are three other groups that are working. One, you heard a little bit of what Todd was talking about, one of our groups is looking at marketing Apneus County, how can we do this? And it so happened that Todd and his group was looking at the Golden Shovel, or some other group at that point, they were just looking at improving what they were doing, so we're looking at, can we tag on to that? And we're tagging on some of the ideas on to what they're doing, so that'll be an integral part of that marketing group, marketing Apneus County. There's another one where we're looking at financial literacy and poverty within the county, how can we start going out and supplementing what the school districts and others are doing with financial literacy everywhere, from kindergarten up through secondary schools, so to see what we can do with that. That committee's going forward. And then the, the fourth committee is the Leadership Apneus Committee, and they're actually going to start here in February with that program going forward, so they've had a lot of good response, and...
It's Thursday, is there a first meeting?
Yes, so they're, they're going forward. So that, that one has probably got a little bit more head start, because it was a little more simpler to get together. So, where we're at tonight, then, is to bring this up so that you get an idea. Now, one of the goals of this group is to try to get something in place by July or August of this coming, of this year of 2013, so to give a little timeframe to that for the possible mandatory, or the trash pickup within the city, however that might be structured.
And we, we're not looking at, I mean, our first concern was, because we have multiple, you know, haulers that are in the city, how it affects them, and that's our primary focus on some of the questions that are out there. You know, we're planning out, we sent a letter out to them, kind of giving them a heads-up that we're proposing this tonight, what their concerns are to bring to us, so we can discuss, and get all the information, you know, we don't want to look at putting a business out of, you know, out of business. We're looking at how effectively it can be put together in a citywide program at the most effective way, because on a given street, you may have four haulers using the same route, and, you know, on a given time during the week. Is there a better way of doing it through, through a different type of program, so?
See, what I was thinking was that the haulers, especially the ones that had the equipment, could form a corporation and take their equipment, and, and, you know, have the corporation buy the equipment, then turn around and offer their services as one corporation to the city on a lease basis. Does that sound...
All of those are possibilities that are going to be put to a table and discussed as we go through.
I'm just thinking if I were a hauler, that's what I would...
And we've been working, we've talked a little bit with Roger Castor about how recycling programs can, can also be incorporated into that, as a stepping down the, you know, down the way, and things of that sort, so. We're just in the beginning stages, we're just bringing it up to you guys, you know. What we'd like to see is possibly, if the city would like to look at, maybe appointing a couple people, city council members, yourself as mayor, possibly the water board, George with the compliance, somebody from a department that would have some more time involved, that we could sit down and go through some other information with, you know, as well, so.
So that's what you're asking tonight?
If we, if there's a way to, yeah, to develop that.
For the council, right, for the committee.
Right.
Good point. What we're asking is, we already have a working committee, so if you could appoint people to that working committee, that would be great.
To continue gathering information.
Because we've already got somewhat of a head start together, but we want, we need to be more inclusive at this point.
Counsel?
I think that's something you need to do. And is, of the other four, anyone want to serve on that committee? Would, you would? Randy? Okay.
You want, would you like one from the council and the mayor, then? We said two.
If we keep...
We said two, but it's...
I'll, I'll serve also, if, I just didn't want to do it if someone else did.
Sometimes we find having two, because one might have a conflict or something, and we serve someone there, too, or you might have conflicting viewpoints, but...
And if you don't mind, if we, you know, if we include George and maybe Steve in on some of that as well, if they have time, you know, and, and then, of course, somebody from the water board, I think is being discussed, invited as well, so.
Anybody from the water board here tonight, any volunteer? Nancy?
Yes.
I just happen to see.
And, and part of what's here, too, we'll also be, once again, inviting those haulers to be a part of the committee, so that we get the, you know...
Oh, definitely, definitely, and that's, gotta keep the communication open.
That's, yes.
That sound good to you, counsel? That would be Randy, and Rob, myself, George, and maybe at times Steve, maybe you could be a special guest or something. And Nancy?
I'll make the motion that we approve of, that this be the first step in making citywide garbage pickup a reality.
I'll second that.
Okay, been moved and seconded to appoint these people I just gave to the committee for the eventual purpose of finding citywide trash pickup. Any other comments or questions? For now, in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand, please.